Regular city council meeting for Newport City Council, scheduled for June 16th, is beginning at 6 o'clock. Present, we have Councilmember Carter Finnegan, Councilmember Andrew Touche, Councilmember John Manette, City Clerk Treasurer Jim Johnson, and Travis Bingham is in the room, Chief of the Police. Oh, and Mike Brown, thank you. And Mike Brown, the Director of the Rec Department, is here. And we're just about to admit Chip Sterns, who is our financial consultant. So I think we're ready to go. So I'm just going to ask if there are additions or deletions. Jim, I'll start with you.
No additions or deletions.
John?
No, thank you.
Nothing from Andrew, nothing from Carter. Okay. I don't have any additions or deletions, but I'll note that I changed the agenda late this afternoon because when I put the copy up on the web the other day and sent it to the folks on the council, I didn't realize that the vendors had copied front and back. So you were missing several of the ones. So I want to, before we do the consent agenda, I want to just note what's in it. And I think probably pull one, actually, out of the consent agenda. We have approval of the amendments from June 2nd. We have AP warrants to approve that you all saw over the weekend from May 31st, June 3rd, and June 6th. Jim, I do not have any PR warrants. I couldn't find any in my box. So if I missed one somehow, we'll have to include it the next time.
Yeah, I'll do a bad one.
I thought so, but I couldn't find them late in the day on Friday after you all had left. So we went without it. And then we have vendor requests, permit requests from Omakase, Jan's Lunchbox, Runaway Tomato, Axion Adventures Doing Businesses Sessions, and Individuals Ryan and Staples for a yellow bus. I've had it brought to my attention. Let me, we may want to pay a little more attention to the vendor permit request for the bus. And actually, the reason that I would have flagged it is because it calls for six days a week operation for six months. So I'm going to ask that we pull that one out of the consent agenda and hold it till our next meeting so that we can ask some more questions about it. Okay? Any questions about that? So the consent agenda would be for, to move, if somebody would like to do so, everything except item 5 under vendor permits.
Sure, can we ask the clarification? So the six days a week, does it start to be into more like a semi-permanent? And it's not necessarily like a street vendor?
Yes, it raises questions for me. I can't remember exactly what the policy says. I think it's something like 12 days of operation. I can't remember. And that's why I don't want to take it on tonight. I haven't had any bandwidth to do it. No, it's fine. So I think we need to look at it more carefully. And Jim and I will take a look at it this week and do some investigation on it and bring it back whenever we have our next meeting. Does that sound all right? So I have a motion.
A second?
No, an ask, a motion itself.
I'll make that motion to do that and weed out the Ryan Staples report.
Great, I have a motion. And do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
So will that keep them from operating now?
Sure will.
Is that the yellow bus up?
I don't know.
We don't know? Okay.
I don't know. All we're saying is, we're going to pull it. I suspect we're going to need a special meeting in about a week from now for other matters. And if we have that, we'll put this on the agenda and deal with it as quickly as we can.
I think they put down Frank Macardario.
They did.
But he's aware he can't read our ones in your session.
All right, well, it doesn't say that on the permit. So that actually raises more questions for me, not fewer.
I'll talk through it about that after that one up.
Jim?
Okay, well, we're going to pull it for today. And then we'll deal with it next meeting, okay? And Jim, if you would help me remember, having pulled it, that you and I have to go back to that one, please. Okay? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. So we're going to run through our task force reports. And Chip Sterns is with us tonight, for which I'm very grateful. He's becoming, I'm seeing more Chip than almost anybody else in my life right now. So Chip, we're really grateful that you could join us tonight. And the request that I made of Chip was that he come tonight prepared to help us begin to get a sense of what it is we should be doing each meeting to look at our financial situation. So I've asked him to walk us through the reports that we put in the packet. And Chip, I think the easiest thing, I don't think there's any... Well, let's get through the balance sheet review. And then we'll talk about whether there are some actions we need to take. Does that sound all right?
Sounds all right.
Go ahead, Chip. Chip, the floor is yours. You can tell us what you want us to be looking at.
If you could pull up in the documents, the balance sheet report has 2025-06:13 a.m.
All right, it'll take me a moment. Sorry, Chip, I should have had this loaded. I knew you were going to ask me for that.
Maybe the council members have it in front of them from their packets?
Yes, we do. We're just pulling it up on the screen.
Chip, tell me again what the date, what the time is on it?
It's in the packet, so it's not going to move right here.
VTEAWC balance sheet, 2025-06:13 a.m.
I think that's this one.
Yep.
Okay, so now we need to go here. And we have to do share. I'm going to share that.
No, I'm sorry, the key thing.
Here we go. Does it do enough to help? Okay, Chip, we have it in front of us. And you should be able to see it on the screen now. Chip, are you there?
Yes, yes, I see it on the screen now. Okay, so general condition, balance sheets. They start with what you have, which is assets, what you owe, which are liabilities, fund balance, what's your worth. The present condition, as you see in the balance sheet in front of you, is only for Fund Zero, known as the General Fund. And the top line is our pooled General Fund cash at the Sub-6 Savings Bank. The only reason it's got $1.7 million in it is because we did close water sewer cash accounts into this account so that we could pay bills. If you can scroll down to where you can see the first liability account is a tax anticipation note of $1.8 million. So the red herring is, this note is due before June 30. And right now, we have less than that amount of money in cash. So we will get into the conversation over the cash flow that documented the bank wanted and some of the notes on that cash flow of what we need in order to meet that obligation. As well, looking just above there, it's now just out of sight, the due-to-from line. I have to scroll up just so you can see the line above what's missing. There it is, right there, due-to-from. $982,000 is owed to the General Fund in net from all other funds. The primary funds that owe that are the water and sewer funds. And most of it is the sewer funds. We have another report that will show the breakdown of what funds owe the General Fund and what the General Fund owes to other funds. So those are key pieces. Now scrolling down at the bottom, is probably on page two, the report for fund balances. If everyone can see that. Our net fund balance from prior year. On this fund, net is a $520,000, $167.27 to the good. Meaning theoretically, if these financials are perfect, that we brought forward a half million in value, though most of that value is owed from other funds. The current year fund balance is the difference between actual revenue against actual expense. And as of right now, with two and a half weeks left in the year, we are at $455,000 to the good of actual revenue against actual expense. And if we were to close the books today, we still haven't paid off $1.8 million. But in theory, we have $975,000 of value. And the reason I use the term "value," it is not always cash. This could be receivables owed from other funds or taxes not yet collected. And that's the summation of the balance sheet for the taxation fund, which is the General Fund, Fund Zero. The highlights in that really, we have less cash than our line of credit obligation that exists on this balance sheet. The cash today is only up by about $11,000 because of collection of water sewer payments that were due today. So between Friday and Monday, not a whole lot has changed relative to the amount of money in the bank. Plus, you have, for our belt to distribute, if I'm looking at the numbers, almost $400,000 worth of accounts payable is going to leave the bank account after the warrants are signed. So even less available to pay that line of credit. The next fund takes up only one page.
All right, hold on.
Yep? We're just scrolling down to the page 1 of 1, Mooreing Management Fund.
Hold on just a second. I'm going to stop share. It's actually on page four.
One other reason, yeah, there you go.
Now that's a different page. And we want... The next one is called what, Chip?
It's the page that's right after the General Fund. And it reads, balance sheet, page 1 of 1.
It was in the same document?
It is in the same document.
I'm sorry, that's what I said.
The same document.
I'm sorry. Hold on.
That's all right. All the balance sheets for all nine funds are contained in the one document, the balance sheet.
Okay, coming back, just a second.
So just scroll down to the next page, 1 of 1, where you see the account numbers begin with the number 1.
Okay, there we go.
Right there. Right?
Yeah.
So this is a small, a small fund, the Mooreing Management Fund. And looking at this, there is no cash. The due-to-from represents cash that is either owed to or owed from the General Fund. This particular fund is in a position where it actually owes the General Fund money of $1,179.73, when it ended last year owing the General Fund $4,439.73. And only because it shows more revenue than expense this year has it reduced the amount that it owes the General Fund. I am not sure what generates revenue for this particular fund. If it's supposed to be self-sustaining, it does not appear to be. And so its purpose may have exceeded its capacity to maintain itself.
Okay.
Let's go on to the next fund. Next fund is also a single page. It's a project fund. This, this one appears to have been, is going to pass to track projects coming in and going out. It still has $17. There's been no expense in fiscal year in the project time. That's not to say that you didn't have projects. That is to say that if you did have projects, it ran just...
Okay.
Let's go to the next balance. Cemetery. If you're careful, you might get it all on the screen.
Yeah, there we go.
So cemetery is the elusive thing that the Vermont statutes allow you to appoint cemetery commissioners. They have endowment funds typically that are meant to raise enough income to cover the cost of operations. The reality is, in the '90s, when there was 8%, 9%, and 10% interest earnings, they could do that. They have not been able to do that for a number of years. Thus, in the bottom of that, there's a due-to of funds. $30,000 is owed to the General Fund out of the cemetery fund. And in the current year, there appears to be a surplus of $578.55. But I'm not sure if in the current year yet that's paid for any of the cemetery funds. Normally, operations would be paid and then reimbursed. They'd be in cash at the top. But as you can see, there's only seven operators in there. It is like that the cemetery are not self-sustaining part and need to have their operational costs considered by budgeting General Fund taxation. And you might still be willing to take that off.
Could you repeat that because it was all a blur?
Yeah, hold on, Chip, just a second. So do I have to do any OBS signs plug in?
No, it's registered on there. Yeah, it's connected hardware.
Okay, let's just try to... I wonder if you can pick up this.
Oh, sugar, sorry, that was me.
That's a good answer. Okay, Chip, I hear...
Fund 3.
Okay.
So Chip, can you just repeat that bottom line? Because you were breaking up here for a moment.
Okay, the bottom line, that the cemetery fund, as it stands right now, owes the General Fund $23,000. The condition of the investments for the cemetery fund are such that it cannot generate enough income to cover the cemetery operating expense. And this has probably been going on for a few years. And as a result, the city council may need to consider moving operational costs of the cemeteries into the General Fund because the cemetery fund is not self-sustaining for their operations.
Okay, I'm going to file that one in my mind for something that we deal with another day.
Yes, another day, bigger fish to fry.
Right, okay. Should we move down to the next one?
Okay, go on to, go on to number 4.
Yeah.
Early S. Niles Fund. I am not sure of the purpose of this fund, but you can notice that there is not any money owed to or from the General Fund. This does appear to be self-sustaining in whatever it does and simply is growing income. I don't know what its purpose is. But at the time that this report was run, there was no cross-fund balance owed.
I'll just tell you, for you and for others in the room, Chip, that we took action to, this is a fund that's designed to support people who may have a particular special need. There's a policy that governs how much it can be tapped and how often. And just last week, the council took action to offer one of these small grants.
So then we can go on to Fund 5.
Can you see it?
Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Yeah.
That's what CDBG is. There are some investments here. There's a minimal amount of money that is owed from the General Fund into this fund of $18.35. But this appears to be investment accounts that are simply earning interest. And I don't know that there's any expenditures going on out there because the fund balance looks like it's just about the amount of interest that would be earned on $30,000. You know, one tenth of 1%.
So Chip, we should probably mark this one for a later conversation another day as well. It's not our highest priority. But my understanding from...
Okay, this one.
My understanding from a conversation with the treasurer is that this fund has had about this much money for a very, very long time. So long that no one really remembers what the original CDBG grant was. I mean, we're talking several decades ago that this was created. So we're going to need to talk about how we resolve that money that's hanging out there.
Yep, because more than likely, whatever these funds that were passed through, their purpose has long since been met and that this is accounts that are sitting there generating income, but their purpose is over.
Yes.
And so they could be consolidated.
That's my understanding too. So we'll have to come back to that one.
Yep. Next, next balance sheet. Public Safety. My understanding is that the police chief is well aware of what these things are. However, noticing that there is an amount owed to this fund from the General Fund of $76.2021. What that means is that probably a State of Vermont ACH deposit went into the bank, PSB, the Sub-6 savings. And a revenue was given to Fund 6 because it related to a police grant. And so physically, the money has not moved to go into one of these assets in Fund 6. That doesn't mean we've lost track of the money. And the whole question becomes, which one? Or is it a different grant that, that $76.2021 belongs to? And again, these are under the control of police chief in most situations.
Okay, so we'll mark that one. And Travis and you and I will have a conversation about that one.
Yeah, you can see that as of right now, the current year fund balance is a negative, almost equal to how much the General Fund owes it, indicating they've spent more money than they got. So it might have been a 50% grant. Not sure.
Okay, let's go...
Next one down, Recreation Trust.
Yeah, go ahead.
So $80,000 worth of investments, of which the largest one in there, $51,000, is Gardner Park Improvements. And from what I have seen through, looking back in the transactions for years on the Gardner Park improvements, the majority of that money came in under the terms of donations. And so we have utilized donations as part of matching income in kind in the General Fund for the Gardner Park improvements that were expensed over there. This particular fund also is indicating that $9,259.01 is held in the General Fund checkbook on behalf of this fund for some particular reason. Typically, revenue again given to recreation, but put into the Sub-6 Savings Bank. However, this year, they have spent $38,523.40 more than they brought in in income in this fund. So I'm hoping that their expenses are related to one or more of the areas sitting in assets, which are just Rec Trust, Daygrew, Valley Beach, Ice Rink, Gardner Park Performing Arts, or Trust Scholarship Fund.
Yeah, just so you know, and again, and so other folks in the room have heard it, almost certainly, all of that money is related to the Gardner Park Improvement Fund because that's where all the activity has been this year, trying to get that fund, that project complete.
So if we have Gardner Park activity in the General Fund and in the Recreation Fund, then as we know, doing grant management becomes quite the task to balance revenues against expenditures when both are all over the place.
Yes, we've been experiencing that. We're aware.
I agree with you. I talked with Frank Chaney quite extensively earlier today, having the same conversation.
Okay, yes, Frank and Carter and Mike really all are on top of this and working to try and get it all resolved.
Okay. Next balance sheet. This one's going to do more than the screen can show. This is the sewer fund. Start so we can see all the assets, which are there. The last asset, due from two other funds. The sewer fund right now is in a position that owes $929,880.41 as of 6:13 and 8:11 a.m. This is one of the direct topics on the cash flow and the anticipation notes that we'll talk about when we get into the cash flow report for the Sub-6 Savings Bank. Again, all the assets there that existed as bank accounts have already been closed and moved to the Sub-6 savings account, the Sub-6 checking account so that we could reduce the balance owed by the sewer fund to the General Fund. Down in the liabilities, there is three, two accounts, about in the middle. The wastewater treatment sinking reserve of $117,7983, and the vector sinking, $266,10589. Those were... Those were the values of those cash accounts when they were closed and moved to the general fund. However, as liabilities, this fund doesn't have any cash to back up those obligations. And so again, possibly the city council in a meeting before June 30th may say, "We are going to, if you will, forgive and forget those two sinking reserves because we don't really have the cash." They're listed on the balance sheet as obligations, but you don't have anything to back it up. And according to these balance sheets, the Sewer Department last year ended in an operational debt of $224,000 and a net fund balance of $308,471.97, of which most of that was probably fixed assets. The facilities, the equipment, the collection systems are where the value is, but it's not cash. In the current year, this fund is running a surplus of $488,951.18, and that's actual revenue, against actual expenditures. Again, we have two and a half weeks left in the year, another payroll. I'm sure some more accounts payable. But one of the numbers that'll trigger a change, I believe, the treasurer has already backed off and adjusted principal payments against liability debt in this fund, but we have not done depreciation of assets in this fund. So that means we can swing this current year fund balance into deficit again. All right, let's roll on to our last fund, Nine. So within this fund, again, the last asset listed due to from other funds. This is $26,793.59 that Water owes the general fund. This number was closer to $700,000 to $800,000 until we closed the cash accounts for the reserves, which under the liabilities, you can see a water tower reserve, a water treatment fund replacement reserve, a reservoir cover reserve. Yeah, all stood as liabilities, but like sewer, this water fund does not have any cash. At the top of the liability, there is presently $1.37 million in a construction line of credit related to the water tower project, which I believe is going to be completed by the end of July. And so that is again, part of our cash flow analysis that was done. And again, part of the notes of what we need to do to convert that construction loan that is due in October to being a bond anticipation note and then into a non-bank long-term note. But this fund itself right now, because we have not done all the approval entries, at the bottom, where if you can scroll up again, you'll see at the bottom that the current year fund balance is $1,419,000 in debt. And how can that be? Well, that's all the payments of the water tower project as expenditures that haven't been booked into construction in progress or assets to depreciate. And that number is slightly higher than the amount of the construction loan, which is not revenue, it's liability. And so those are close to each other, but not yet a whole. That's where the enterprise funds are required to act more like a business and to do depreciation and fixed assets and long-term debt, all self-contained in the fund where the operations are. So the reports that I would see council wanting to review more frequently than they ever have are the balance sheets, which in this case, there's a page or two for each fund. And then the budget status report. We've got time, I'd like to run through that. Again, it's as of, that's gonna be BTNDWC Budget Status, 2025 06:13 a.m. You're pointing at it.
Yeah, hold on. I'll just double-click it. Guess we'll just do it right there. Okay.
So, general fund again, starting. One of the things that I did when I ran this report, within the software, you generate, you can generate what are called header accounts. Header accounts create a method of sub-totalling groups of activity. And so I ran this report not showing you every detailed line, but only showing you subtotals that you would see in a very lengthy report of all the revenues and all the expenditures. The first thing to notice, relative to the group of activity referred to as taxes, the total budget was $6.2 million. And the actual turns out to only be $6.057. Again, in our cash flow, I will tell you that, as we've talked about it, the state municipal tax adjustment was treated as additional revenue since 2018 in every budget forward, including that year's budget, but that was never extra money. And this is a clear sign that the amount of revenue needed in taxation has not been met. And in accrual accounting, it should always be met. Overall, in this first group that you're looking at, one thing that pans out pretty predominantly is Gardner Park. Looks like the cumulative budget was $11,750. And the total actually in revenue, $428,328.26. And that is because of, I know, I did a transfer from the Recreation Fund of $200,000, which was, I believe, grant money that came in towards Gardner Park. So the odd piece relative to the total for Recreation, you planned on $487.76, and you got $765.049. But the ones that are very over-budget for collection is because most of that is grant money that came in that was not budgeted for.
Yep, we're still with you.
Okay. So then, again, because we summarized the headers, our total revenues are right in the middle of the page instead of like seven pages down.
Thank you for that.
So you can digest that your budgeted revenues, 7322161. Your actual revenues at this time, 7981793.28. So you brought in more than you anticipated by your budget. And again, including the fact that taxes wasn't calculated right, wasn't budgeted right, because of grants coming in, you exceeded the total budget for revenue in the general fund. That's why it's not always great, we made extra money, because you didn't.
Right, because I suspect on the expense side, Chip, we're gonna see a cost overrun on Gardner Park for all the improvements we did as well, right?
I was like, yes, if the expenditures were all put in the right pockets, then yes. Because somewhere over in the Rec. Fund, they also spent Gardner Park money, I think.
Okay.
So, assignation of the group that is 0-30 Government Operations as expenditures. $756.054, cumulative budget of all of those areas, and $761 spent. Does anything stand out there? City Manager, 117, 362, 156 spent. I guess I don't need to address how that happened. And other than municipal building is under, that's your saving grace to the one that's over. Right, to be what, $5,000, $6,000 is pretty close against 3/4 of a million. And Public Safety, Police Department. This is gonna break between pages, so it might be a little harder to trace. You can see that the first two lines are over budget, and we still have another two and a half weeks to go. Police Administration, Police Patrol, Police Dispatch, Animal Control, and then Police Contract Services. $2.366 for the Police Department, $2.390 spent.
That's $2.590, isn't it?
Yes, $5.90. I'm trying to view it on my screen, it's not quite as clear. Fire Department. Looking through that, $219, 905, and $197 spent. Again, we still have two and a half weeks to go, another payroll, another set of accounts payable. Now, some of these, at least for the Police Department and maybe for the Fire Department, there may be some revenue yet to come in for reimbursements relative to expense from outside agencies or services or towns where services are provided and have not yet paid or been built. Continue down to Public Works. And the standout here is Street Maintenance. $285,909 budgeted, $324,345.35 spent. And City Property, $118,100 budgeted, $180,170 spent. And the EV charging stations. Nothing budgeted, but spent, $1784.39. So the total for Public Works is less spent than the total budget allocated to them. And again, we still have two and a half weeks to go.
Okay.
I'm not sure why, but the city landscaper kind of sits by himself and has overspent their allocation. $835.90 to $98.251. The Rec. Department. Gardner Park, $152,828, spent $195,691. And that is grant-oriented spending, because we also had revenue that exceeded what we anticipated as well. Then a couple lines stand alone with no header, Workers' Comp and Unemployment. Conservation and Development is a group that in total, $23,049, but spent $37,000. I'm not familiar with what would have gone on with Conservation and Development.
I don't know, make a note, we'll go back to it.
So now roll down to Health and Welfare, bring that one up, so can be seen.
Yep.
$84,000 and spent $72. And that, next one, stands out as a budgeting problem, Debt Service. Budgeted $160, spent $237,988. So possibly, a lot of that could be interest on the line of credit that was unbudgeted. But if there were additional debt payments of principal and interest that were not known when the budget was put together, then that's a problem which may contribute to debt service. So two totally different reasons, and one of them is not justifiable.
Can he repeat that?
Can you say that last sentence, the two reasons that could be
I'm down, and So if we had unentered line of credit that made us go far over our debt service costs, cutting the whole line of credit for the 12 month?
Yes.
The cash flow consideration that was included versus debt payments made for both principal and interest, in which there was no budget number, yet we knew we had these debts that we had incurred and we did for. Typically, when you start making debt payments, you know a year in advance of the debt schedule. So there's not a reason that you should have debts being paid as expenses that you didn't know about. Down at the $090.97, or the one above it, Personnel Expenses, $13,000 with nothing budgeted. That may also relate necessarily to the City Manager line that was over. Other expenditures. Not sure what qualifies in there, but you were $70,000, almost $80,000 over in other expenditures. As well in capital improvements, you were slightly over, and our appropriations are perfect. What we said we'd give away, we gave away. So, the advantage of having a report that suppresses So the advantage of having a report that suppresses the detail of every account to the header accounts is that you can find a group that needs further evaluations. And so typically, you would have, if you will, in your back pocket, the same budget status report with all the lines of detail, so that if someone said, "I want to see that group broken out," you could then call it up and look at just that group. Without being burdened with looking at every line of every account through the entire chart of accounts, when 90% of it's fine, and there's only sections that we really need to focus on. Try to streamline what you're paying attention to, to those areas that are concerned, and not to areas that are flowing normally. So the balance at the bottom of this total general fund, actual, or 55, 56826, matches exactly the current year fund balance on the balance sheet that was provided earlier in those other reports. And that's why the balance sheet by itself, what you have, what you owe, what you worth, and where you stand this year, does not require looking at all the revenue against expenditures to see where you stand this year. But scroll on to the next step, and this is mooring management. This fund only had income, 3260. I'm not sure if that was contributions, fees paid, or what. But it started last year over $4,000 in the hole, and in this fiscal year, gained 3260 of it, and is still 1,700 in the hole. That's just from rope off the balance sheet. So you can scroll down to the project fund. Again, all these header accounts say no money in, federal state grants, and no project had any expenditures. And you can see, over the years, they treated and set up multiple sets of accounts to track projects through this fund, but in 2025, none of them were used. We walk to the next fund. Brought in, 9,06531 through trust, lot sales, and others, and then spent only on East Main Street Cemetery, 848676. And the net result is the 578 that we saw on the balance sheet as the current year fund balance. We brought in slightly more than we spent in this fund. Earliest Niles, again. Earned 7,33118, spent 161562. Net gain 571586. CEDG, as I suspected, the only thing it got is interest income. Those are all the various projects from the past that go through there. Public safety funds. Interest on accounts, and then Stone Garden brought in 10,320. And so that probably is where the amount of money on the due-to-from indicates that the general fund owes the public safety fund money, probably is the Stone Garden money. And then the justice fund, they spent 18,000. I think the justice fund can only be used for non-budgetary items for the police department, things that aren't covered by a normal police department budget. And so the chief should be able to answer what that was, and also, you know, if the Stone Garden, if any more Stone Garden was spent, because there's no expenses reflected for it. All right, and then seven, the recreation trust. Again, I believe that primarily we're looking at interest of 556 between all the accounts. Program revenues, 48725, typically that would be for some rec program that was run, swimming, the arts, Babe Ruth, Little League tennis, whatever programs that they ran, brought in 4875. And then something about other revenues, maybe donations. I saw a few that I thought may be donations to the scholarship. Continuing rec trust income and trips and events, other expenditures, 23,000, $1. That might be where donations were transferred to the general fund relative to the Gardner Park project, where we transferred over 23,000 worth of donations to match what was needed for the grant. Fund the sewer. Sewer in a nutshell. Sewer is billed on an accrual basis, so all revenue is recognized at the moment of billing. And though the budgets for revenue and expense net to zero, as you can see at the bottom line for the sewer fund, the rates were never adjusted necessarily to bring in that amount of money. And so that's where the actual revenue line is 114,000 short. And again, we have a week and a half, or two and a half weeks left to pay bills. Now, the debt service here that shows 377, 662 in debt service budgeted and only 23,000 as expenses, that's because the treasurer already took the principal payments out of the expenditures and put them against the liability lines to reduce the long-term debt. What is not showing on this report, because it hasn't been calculated, the last line of expenditures, sewer system depreciation. And with 13 or 18 million dollars worth of assets, depreciation typically, I attempt to budget depreciation to be whatever my principal balance payments are, plus or minus what depreciation would calculate out to be, so that in the end, the budget still stays even, but my actuals turn out according to depreciation versus principal payments. So we're not done with that fund because of depreciation. And then our last fund, nine, which is water. Water department income exceeds the budget, and I believe that that is because there is grant money that came in, or ARPO money that came in relative to the water tower that increased the amount of revenue received for the year. It is not that user fees raised enough money, and that is why the user fees are going up in September, I believe. And in this case, the outstanding item here is the capital expenditures, budgeted 55900 and spent 2.1 million, and that is the water tower project. The debt service of 319, I was told that the bills, invoices, the debt service payments have not been received by the city yet, so they have not been actualized. And again, in this fund, there will be depreciation that has not been booked yet. So that is pretty much why it's 1.1 million in debt. And of the 2.1 capital expenditures, the majority of that is the water tower. And overall, citywide, where you stand today is the very last number. You're in a deficit citywide by that, 511,000. We still have adjustments throughout the chart of accounts to do before June 30. Some of that can't be done until after June 30. So again, the reports that I think city council should be looking at, the balance sheets for all funds, suppressing accounts with zero balance, and the budget status report, suppressing detail to header accounts. So that you get the picture of where you stand at any given time. These reports were as of Friday morning at 8:00 in the morning. We have since done two more days of business. For comparison, I did want to show the council, you should find the VTN EWC inter-fund balances
Is that the one you're looking for, Chip?
So this is, well, that's one of them. That is today's, as of, again, 8:15 a.m., Friday, the due-to-from balances. And these match the budgets, the balance sheet reports that we did. Notice that the sewer fund owes 929, and the water fund owes 26,000. That's the key point to notice in this. If you close that and open the next one next to it on your list. That's last year, fiscal year end. Notice the sewer fund owed 1.3 million, and the water fund owed almost 400,000. And the majority of the general fund, 1.7, was owed from those two funds. So in the last 12 months, and I can tell you honestly, I think it's only really in the last two and a half months, that we have shifted cash in such a manner to reduce the water and sewer obligations to the general fund to the minimal amount we can produce by moving their cash reserves and closing them. Otherwise, the numbers would continue to grow. So the stark difference between what it was a year ago and what it is today is the reason I ran last year and wanted to show it to you compared to where you stood Friday morning.
So Chip, if it's okay, I'm going to stop sharing the screen for a moment.
Yep.
Before we go on to the cash flow document, I want to be careful, because you've covered an awful lot of territory tonight. And for me, I've been on council for a year and four months almost now, and that's the most clear picture I've had in 16 months of our financial condition, and it raises a lot of questions for me. I want to, it makes me want to go deeper into a whole bunch of those areas that you were talking about. So I'm sure that I am not the only one in the room who feels that way, and I do not want to get us in a position tonight where we're trying to figure out how to go deeper into each of those areas. That's going to be the work of the finance team, and then to come back with some conclusions. And there will be opportunity, I promise, for the community to try and dive deeper into these numbers with us as we go along. So I guess tonight, what I'd like to do is just first ask any community residents if you have major questions you want to make sure we caught when you caught them. So without preaching to the choir here, if you want to just stand up and say, "I noticed this," and have somebody on council note that that's something you noticed, I think that'd be great. And we aren't going to try and answer these questions tonight, okay? And Carter, maybe since you're chairing that committee, if we could have you note things. And then I'll give the council the same opportunity, just to share anything you want to note before we move on to the cash flow document. So I know Lori's got something she'd like to say, and then we'll see if anybody else would. And please say your name as you begin, in case there are people who don't know who you are.
Lori Grim. Chip, you mentioned a couple of lines, 0-80-69.55 and .56 seemed to be pulled out from somewhere, like, I don't know if they were benefits or whatever. So is it possible for us to go back and sort of, not, obviously not tonight, just something to talk about? It seems like they were some special, or they were out on their own. Would that just be a coding error, possibly?
Yes. Just the account numbers got assigned to them in their own group.
Okay.
In the future, we are talking about trying to restructure the chart of accounts. And so when you suppress the headers and those two accounts don't have a header account to go to, they show up. That's why I said, they're kind of eyeball, they didn't show up because there's no header affiliated with them.
Go ahead, Ann.
I just had a question about depreciation that you have said is going to be added on to how much expense we have. I don't think we ever budget for depreciation in water and sewer. Should we be budgeting for it if you're going to treat it as an expense? Just a question.
Because these are enterprise funds, the answer is you have to do depreciation because you're required to report and track fixed assets. Should you budget for it? The answer is yes, because in theory, you should be raising your rates to cover the replacement, which is created by depreciation. And by the time you depreciate something fully, you should have created enough cash reserve to replace it.
And why don't we depreciate in the regular general fund?
Number one, it's not required, because it's not an enterprise fund, it's treated by taxation. But there are communities that do full depreciation, and they create a fund that's called fixed assets for general government, and they have everything, buildings, streets, help works, police cars, fire trucks, highway trucks, highway equipment that they put in there, and they budget depreciation for. But the reality is, in governmental accounting, you're not required to do that for the taxation fund. You can choose to adopt GASB 34 or not. But enterprise funds are basically required to be treated like a business.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
So the depreciation issue in the water and sewer funds, it's a problem, because unless they've changed the staff... it's a problem because unless they've changed the statute, you are not allowed to include depreciation when you set your rates. It says that you can deduct out your principal and interest of your debt payments for your improvements. And you can also set up a sinking fund in anticipation of future investment. But depreciation is not to be added in as one of your expenses because if you're taking out your principal and interest payments of your debt service and the depreciation on that asset, it's double dipping. So I think that we need to dive into that one at greater length because otherwise what happens is that the taxpayers or the rate payers are going to be paying twice for the same asset. They're going to pay when it was, a loan was taken out to create it, and then they're going to be paying again through depreciation. So that's an issue. I also wanted to make note that if you turn to the budget to actual report on government operations, the legal fees to date are listed at $37,444. The actual amount is $103,129.90, which is a difference of $65,685.48. And I have no flippant idea where that is. So we might want to do a look around to see where it went. I suspect that it was probably coded something other than legal fees. I don't know if Ms. Labs can speak on that.
I don't want to go down that road tonight. I hear your question.
That's fine. So we need to take a look at that. I also noted that in the budget for this year, in reference to the fire truck bond payments, there was no interest that was logged in there. It's just a principal amount of $67,880.
I can speak to that, Jennifer. It was, I was at the table as we were trying to figure out how to budget. We just made a rough guess of what principal and interest payments would run and threw a line in there. We didn't try and, it's not a careful calculation. We don't have that long enough.
I just was, with the debt service being kind of out of whack, it had me concerned, but there was no interest.
No, they're combined.
Okay. And then on tonight's warrants, there is a payment to Pacific Bank for the Gardner Park Improvement Loan in the amount of[779.52][779.84]$3,972.16. However, at the June 17, 2024 meeting, the terms of the loan stated that it was supposed to be $3,782.50, which is roughly about $200 less. And over the course of the loan, that could be problematic. The other part to it is that it does not appear that this loan payment was included in the budget, which is $47,665,000 annually. That's not in there, as best I can tell. I could not find any debt service for the Gardner Park Improvement Loan.
Okay, we'll come back to it.
Okay.
This is not your last opportunity.
I understand. I'm just going over my notes, so.
And I'll just say while you're doing that, Jennifer, my goal is that we will get in the habit of going over these budget, these balance sheets, at least for the time being, every single meeting. Every two weeks, we'll be looking at them again. And they will inform, I promise we will not always do it to the tune of an hour of our time. Okay, I think we've gotten primmer now that Chip has provided to all of us for how to understand them. We will look at them with enough care to actually look at the numbers together and not just say, "Do we approve or don't we?" What these numbers say. And this will become the foundation for a pretty intensive budgeting process that we're going to go through this fall as we work toward the '26, '27 fiscal year budget.
Okay, I have another item.
Yes, if we can keep them brief.
I'm trying to keep it, so in the documents that were offered up in the annual report and also on the budget page on the working document on the website, for when the budget process was going on, they listed the '24, '25 total budget, municipal budget, after offset by income, But that wasn't the amount. The actual budget that was passed was $4,995,594. So those numbers are off by roughly $48,000. And that's a problem because it makes it look like the percent increase to taxpayers this year was less than what it really was. The other problem is that the budget for this year appears on the working document for the '25, '26 proposed budget of $5,290,268. But the warning that went out to the people was $5,267,700. So there's a discrepancy there as well. Then if you go to...
So Jennifer, I just want to know how long your list is because I'm not quibbling with the veracity of your claims.
Yep.
And we are going to have to go back, we're going to have to look at all of this carefully.
I'm just firing the topics out for...
There may be a more efficient way with a laundry list of topics. If you've got a whole list.
I have one more.
All right, go ahead.
In the documents that were put in the annual report for the fire department expenses, there was no line item for the fire chief or the administrative firefighter. And so I can't tell if they're actually in the budget that was approved or not. If you go to a document that I believe came off the website, they do seem to be there. But there's such a crossover disparity between all the documents that were in the annual report, what's the working document, what the warning was, that it's just a big fat mess. So.
Good luck. Thank you. Your concerns are noted, really. I mean, where I want to go, y'all, is I think all of us in the room, and certainly all of us on council, are fully aware that we have a lot of work to do. And the only way I know how to do that is to try and chunk it and take it one piece at a time. And Chip is giving us, I think, very good guidance. His first piece of advice was, "Don't worry about how the chart of accounts works." Immediately, figure out your balance sheets, figure out what you have, what you owe, and what's the other line, Chip?
What you're worth.
What you're worth. What you're worth, right? Let's get that straight because that's going to be the underpinning for everything else. So that's where we're focused right now. The next step, which we're going to go on to in just a moment here, is the question of cash flow in general. How do we make sure that the city is solvent and can pay its bills? When we get through those two things, honestly, the next thing on my mind is going to be budgeting for next year. Because I don't want to see us making similar mistakes next year that we've made in the past, including the year in which I was asked at the end of the process to try and preside over some of those budgeting choices, right? Like, I'm more than aware that there were mistakes made in that process. So we're going to do our level best to try and clean it up step by step. And it can't help hurt to know what the mistakes were, though I just want to be clear to the community, the goal is not to go back and figure out what the mistake was so that we can fix it for last year at this point. In my mind, the goal is to figure out how we make sure that we got the cleanest possible financial operation going forward, budgeting and financial accounting.
The other item is that you need to go back and take a look at the deficit for last year because I think that needs to go out to the voters.
Believe me, we are looking at the deficit. Believe me when I tell you, we are looking at the deficit. So, Chip...
But on the cash flow, you shall see all we are looking at.
I think that's our cue. And well, actually, let me just make sure. Anybody else in the community want to raise any concerns, specifically or generally? Yeah? You have to say your name, please.
I'm Ron Place. I would like to not get all my information from the newspaper. I would like to have, you know, a printed handout here of what you're coming up with.
We are nearing the point where we can begin to try and create some interpretive materials for the community. We're not there yet, but we're getting close. And tonight, the council is seeing some of those printed materials along with you, really, for the first time this week. So that's exactly where we're headed, hold on.
Yeah, well, you know, I...
So keep coming to these meetings or going to the finance meetings on Friday afternoons at 4 o'clock because that's where we're working this stuff all out.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so Chip, let's go back to share screen. We'll share our screen again. And this time, we're going to put up the cash flow document. I can't play with it much, unfortunately. Okay, Chip, there you go. You want to walk us through this?
Yeah, I guess I'll try.
Actually, hey, Chip, hold on. Let me just say a word about this.
I pointed out on the...
Let me say a word of context about this. The primary reason that we're working on this cash flow certificate is because we know that we have to respond to a cash flow shortage, a cash shortage, almost immediately. And there are going to be a series of things that have to happen over the next year to dig us out of the hole that we're in. And the first thing that the bank wants to see is how do you expect cash to operate? What money will come in and when, and what money will go out and when? And where will you see dips and ebbs and flows over the course of the coming year? So Chip is going to walk us through our best guess. And this is what our treasurer has signed and provided to our bankers for them to look at to help us determine what our options are in terms of financing some of this debt. So go ahead, Chip.
So this was worked on over the course of two weeks. I worked on it one day. And to start with, if we pay off right now the line of credit of $1.8 million plus interest with cash that we have in the bank now, that at the end of June 2025, we anticipate being $870,000 in the red. And I'm quite sure that the bank is not going to let us write them a bad check out of our own account that's in their bank. So that begins the ripple effect immediately of the cash we expect in, the checks we expect to write out. And that is month by month, a summary that we generated. And the bank's document literally says, "What are you starting with? What do you anticipate spending? What do you anticipate bringing in? What is that month? Deficit or surplus? And what is your cumulative debt or surplus?" So we generated the same in a spreadsheet and effectively say that right now, we are $870,000 in the red and we haven't even paid the line of credit yet. But that's our projected balance, 630, if we pay off the line of credit with cash we have in the bank. Says we don't have the cash in the bank. Perfect start. Then each month through the end of June 2026, we project that we remain in a cumulative deficit cash balance based on the activities. And so there's no point in the next 12 months that we are ever at a position of having a cash surplus or balance in the PSP checking account. And that's what that column E represents. So each month, we identify some key points of what's coming in and what's going out, really as a footnote to help the lender understand the activity that we anticipate in a given month. Then, under the notes section, we did the unthinkable. We gave them what we would like to be, our way of dealing with our cash deficit and utilizing tools, some of which have yet to be approved by the voters. And so we are well aware of the position of what authority the city has, what the city charter states we can do, what's already been voted on, what was voted on but not for enough, what was voted on to be raised in taxes but not enough. And so as we sat there, it was pretty easy for us to list out five major flaws that we need to address. And so the numbers, they are what they are in terms of where we have for cash now. They make no anticipation for any other resources or any other expenditures. It is our best knowledgeable position of where we, what we have for cash and what our cash position will be without any intervention. That's the top half of the spreadsheet. Then, if you can scroll up, because maybe the people can't see the notes section?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. So under the notes, there's a series of activities of which we are anticipating. And again, the term "city anticipates" begins every one of them, but the anticipation is really through the bank, the lender, or the public. The first one is to do a tax anticipation note for purposes of cash flow. $2.725 million. We actually need this now. The reason we need this now is so that we can pay off $1.8 million and hopefully leave a balance for the month. Second, a bond anticipation note for the water tower. The estimate is $3 million. The actual will be whatever the total project cost is, less whatever grant is going to apply. So that the construction note, which is due in October, we can convert that into a bond anticipation note for one year. And within that following year, apply to and hopefully be awarded long-term debt through the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank for a period of 20, 25, or 30 years to pay off that debt. That would require a rate adjustment in the water fund to pay off that debt. The next one down, conversion of the '24, '25 line of credit, which we know to be $1.8 million. That is the reason of number one, to get another note to pay it off. But then to add a public vote in which we would look towards our general public bond to be paid back through tax dollars over the course of five, 10, 15, 20 years. Of that million eight that has grown over time to be required for cash flow. Several times, we've talked about how we got to that $1.8 million. But in general, it is the municipal tax adjustment being treated as extra revenue. And it never was, and we've done it for seven years, and a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. Item number four, long-term debt for wastewater cash flow. The sewer fund, Fund A, it was the general fund, about a million dollars. That has accumulated over... That has accumulated over time. It didn't just happen. It's been growing year after year. And now sewer rates are being adjusted to that, what is necessary for operations. But that cash has been spent already on sewers' behalf, and we're looking for a public vote to allow for a long-term note for the sewer fund to be paid back by sewer fees over the course of some amount of time to the amount of a million dollars. And then the fifth item is a lease or loan for the fire truck purchase. We know that the public already approved $800,000. But for delivery of the truck, we need an additional $65,000. And so either the public vote is going to be to increase it by $65,000 or simply replace the $800,000 with $865,000, depending upon how the warned article is written. That will be paid back through taxpayers. So then, another instruction for the council, as we are looking at this, we have another item to be a warned article at the special meeting we're hoping, I think they're hoping in July, to authorize for a special election, two different bond votes, which we saw in number three and number four. And number five for the difference in the fire truck. And as well, to have the voters authorize increasing the amount to be raised by taxes the next fiscal year by $220,000, which is the amount that was inappropriately budgeted as other remedy for municipal tax adjustment, which everyone now is realizing that's not extra money, that's money paying somebody else's tax bill. So that's the list and the reasoning behind for each one, two, three, and four underneath the city council's authorizations. So it requires the city council to authorize to take action, to warn and hold a public vote. And then after the public vote, you're not going to like to hear this, but you've got to wait at least 30 days in case there's a recall before you take any action to initiate But to start with the simplest terms, we cannot pay the bill. We don't have the money.
Okay, thank you, Chip. So we may have specific questions for you, but I think I can take it from here. So I want to, I guess what I want to do is say to the council that I don't think there's any actual vote that we would need to take tonight, but I want to kind of tell you what my own conclusion is based on this cash flow document. We're going to meet tomorrow morning with the folks from Pesumsik Bank. Chip will be a part of that meeting with us. Carter will be there. I think Lori from the Finance Task Force maybe will be with us as well. And we're going to hear from them what they think of this cash flow certificate and kind of the path out of this that we presented, how they feel about that. And then we're going to hear from them about what is, it's actually going to take to get to at least the first step in this process, which would be the loan that we're requiring or requesting in anticipation of tax income. And we're telling them that we've ballparked that at about 2.725 million dollars. So I don't think there's any kind of a vote tonight because we don't have enough information from the bank at this stage to know exactly how that would work, what the terms would be, what we could actually borrow. There's too much we don't know. So the first thing I want to do is kind of put the council on notice that I think we're going to need a meeting next week in order to make some decisions. And my goal would be that to work with the bank this week and see if we can come back with the right information to have that meeting by a week from tonight. But I want to hear from the three of you in particular, and Jim as well, if you're available next Monday night if we were to warn a special meeting for this conversation.
I might be able to attend virtually, but I probably cannot because I'm traveling.
Okay. So it'll depend on Kevin. Are there, are you gone all week next week?
Yes.
So it's like, you're back on Wednesday night?
No, sorry. I'll be out all week.
Okay. So the truth is, it's not going to matter one way or the other in terms of your, although on Wednesday night, like if we did it a different night next week, is it more possible you could join us virtually?
Yes, it's just that Monday I'm flying.
So can I just get a quick poll, Andrew and John, from the two of you about what? So we're talking about Monday night, the 23rd, which I'm hearing Andrew and John can both do. We have Tuesday night, the 24th available.
I can do Tuesday.
Okay.
We already have a commitment Wednesday night for water and sewer, and then Thursday night I have a commitment.
Okay, but we could usurp the water sewer meeting slot if we have to.
Yes.
Right? So, so it sounds like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday would work for John. What about you?
Monday and Wednesday we work for you.
Okay. And you said you might be able to do Wednesday. All right. So why don't we just please mark out right now, Monday and Wednesday night as potential nights that we might warn a special meeting? Jim, I don't mean to roll past you. Will those both work for you? Because you can't imagine something more fun to do.
Noted.
Noted. All right. So that's the first thing I needed to do. The second thing I think we need to do is, any way we find our way out of this is going to require going to the voters. And Jim and I have done the math and kind of the path of least resistance, or the, that's not the right way to put it. The only way to meet our obligations, the quickest way to meet our obligations to warn this special election for this purpose would be for us to vote no later than July 7th on warning the meeting, at which point we would need to have the language that we propose for the vote, for the various items that are here in the, in the notes. And then if we did it on July 7th, we could hold the vote as early as, as early as August 12th, noting Chip's concern that whenever we hold this vote, it's actually, we still can't go borrow against it for another 30 days after that, in case there's someone who bring, has a concern about the vote that's been, wants to raise a concern about the vote. Okay? So if, the reason I'm trying to put my foot on the gas here is because kind of a best-case scenario puts us mid-September before further loan money that we're going to require would be available by action of the voters. And the first vote, not a vote, the first action that we would take next week would be an action that, as I read the charter and as I get initial feedback from our attorneys, the council can legally make a, make a decision on behalf of the community, on behalf of the voters, to take out that short-term line of credit to cover cash flow. So we can do that one next week without an action from the voters, but the other ones that have not yet been approved would have to come by action of the voters. Does that all make sense to you? Do you all on council have any questions about the way we've laid out this? I have no illusion, by the way, that this is exactly how things will go. I'm just trying to point our way through the wilderness at this point. But this is my best guess. John, you look pensive. Does that mean you want to say something?
No, 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 I get where we're going.
Okay. Andrew, you okay?
Yes.
All right. And Carter? Okay. And I have had some conversation with Kevin, so I think he understands and appreciates what we're working toward here. And Jim and I have had lots of conversations about this, so. So that's my way of putting everybody on notice. No action tonight, but you could expect that we're going to have to make a decision about a vote, about a special election, probably at our next regular meeting, which will be the 7th of July. And then that brings me to the last item, which is, if we're going to hold an election by the middle of August, as has been rightfully pointed out to us by Roland, there's a lot of work we have to do to make, make it clear what we're doing and why we're doing it. How do we get into the position we're in? How do we propose to get out of the position we're in? How do we make sure that whatever we do does not further deepen the hole that we've created because we continue to make similar errors in judgment going forward? Right? Those are the, so I just wanted to begin to get a little bit of feedback really from the council about any ideas that you all have about how we might spend the month of July and first week or two of August trying to do that education. And I'm prepared to put a fair amount of energy into this, along, I'm sure, with the finance team and probably water and sewer, because there are implications in this vote for the water and sewer team as well. So we would go back to both of those groups this, this coming week and kind of fill them in on where we stand.
So I guess I could speak to the task force or the financial task force and bringing the public up to speed on everything that we have been diving into. I mean, this, this walkthrough that Chip gave us was wonderful, but yeah, I think explaining the terms of, just as you laid out, I feel like a forum, at least one in deep, like presentation, I've sent ideas to you about how I'd want to concur and make sure it matches our books. Chip's recommendations are clear. We got support from VLCT, so we've got some stronger legal legs. And just in general, getting more eyes on it so that way it's, it's completely flushed out when we show you guys. Because this, this is big picture, these are the projects, and kind of identifying those things. So it's a very clear picture because I understand, just as, right before the meeting began, a wonderful public member notified us of our other reasons that taxes might go up. So I understand that anything increasing is, is not ideal, but having the reasons and understanding of why is going to be key. And so that's one idea. But yeah, I think just around maybe just having, I don't know if something going into the paper by weekly is needed. Having a Q and A session. I don't think it's going to be a one-hit wonder, but no. Like, I'm not anticipating one forum is going to solve all of the questions and answers in our community, so. But I've definitely been dwelling on that. What are other ideas that you guys have?
It's definitely going to take a lot of, a lot of communication to get this across. Obviously, we're digging into it to, all of us are getting a better understanding of where things are. Still a lot to dig into. But I think that it's going to take, you know, the newspaper, any KTV. I think it's going to take a lot of different resources, along with maybe a couple of public forums to allow for questions and comments, and maybe a couple of presentations like Carter alluded to, so.
I agree with a whole lot of others.
And I feel like there is going to have to be some collaboration ahead of time with the Water and Sewer Task Force. We've been, we've been talking about the same numbers and checking in on each other, but there has not been an official...
Yeah, maybe even a joint meeting, actually.
Yeah, there has not been an official joint meeting, so that will need to take place.
I think a couple of public forums would definitely put them all away.
Can I ask a general question?
Jennifer has a question first, please. Let's keep our questions limited to the question of public education at this point, okay? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Mine is not a question, mine is a statement.
That's fine.
And I'm speaking as a taxpayer. And I'm, I'm looking forward to what's going to happen in the fall. Putting everything that's on my list...
Yes.
That's going to hit in the fall.
Yes.
And there's a lot.
Will you?
You know, that we, and if something had been poured and those line item by line item...
I just think we can do it in the next week. We've got a lot of work to do, and it's going to take time to make sure we do it in a way that is thought, that is filled with intentionality and thoughtfulness. Because I do not want to get us in the position of having made decisions we regret and then having to figure out how to backtrack on those choices. Lori?
A question for Jim, and then I'll make a statement as a finance committee task force person. When the, the one line about going back to the voters to increase our budget revenue request to the voters of $220,000 for next year to get, to get out of that problem, when do you have to have a vote? When does that need to be done so that you can figure out everything and get the tax bills out? That, I'm afraid, I'm afraid if we wait till August for that and then have to wait an additional 30 days, it might not be enough time for you to get the bills out for that piece. So that's just, I don't know if you want to answer that or if...
We can do bill so that we get the tax rate from the education department. And normally, we send them out, if they do on November 1st, we send them out the first week in October. But it can be earlier than that if they have the rates and we get the bill printed.
Okay, okay. Again, I was only concerned about the timing of moving forward to get that in correctly so that we can correct that problem. And I just want to say, as a task force member, I will tell you, every Friday at 4:00, we're here, we're talking. We, we did not meet this past week for the first time in whatever it is.
Two and a half months.
Emails going back and forth amongst the members. And I would just say, you know, Jennifer, I know you've done an awful lot of work, and anything that you can give us in writing that we can look specifically at, I more than appreciate what Chip has done. It really helped me tonight to understand and better. It gets better every, every meeting. But if you see something specifically that, that you want us to look at, by all means, we'll be happy to take, take a look at it.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of the community? Ian?
I think it would be good to know for the public, possibly, what all this does. You know, we, we do all these loans and it all goes as smoothly as we expect. For instance, what, what does the deficit then look like on June 2026? And are we, from then on and thereafter, plus or minus, you know, 1,000 or two or 10? I don't know what you want to call a plus or minus. But are we no longer in a situation where we don't have enough money to pay as of June 2026? I know we'll have to take a line of credit. Even if we started at zero, we would need a line of credit till the tax money comes in. But then are we, are we going to be able to pay everything off by the end of, by June 2027? I think it's important to know what the whole scheme will achieve for us.
That's a very important point around public education. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to echo real quick. Please shoot me an email with anything, like just as Lori was saying, having and writing. Like I was typing the questions as best as I could, and then I was like, don't even look at the numbers that I'm hearing and trying to regurgitate. I'm like, just high level, trying to do my best to understand in the moment here at the table. But again, an email is just like so easy to reference, and then you can even copy-paste the accounting numbers, and I can just quickly go back on those. Also, like the idea, because I was saying, one forum's not going to do it, but if it was like a series on focus topics, once you get an outlay of like, what are the concerns that I'm hearing from the public? What are the main questions? And if I can bucket those at all? And then maybe having a three-part series. I don't know if that's going to be like digestible or sexy enough for the general public to like, to, yeah, like review all of those, but at least it's out there. And yes, a model to impact, like having a, yeah, because these on Excel spreadsheet, that's my idea, is to eventually be able to put those in and showcase where we should be, but noted there. So thank you.
Anyone else?
I like the idea of splitting it up. Maybe do water and sewer separately from the general fund, except to the extent there's overlap, obviously.
Say more about that, John.
Well, it's just that the water and sewer funds are intended to be self-sustaining and operated on a different principle than the, than the general fund. So maybe one session just focused on those would make sense.
Andy, any ask for you?
Uh, Andy.
Okay. Hearing what we're hearing.
John, John, too.
John, John too.
Can I just have a... For my own limited information question. The monies that are owed to the general fund from water and sewer, will that do anything to ease the burden on the general fund? Is that actual dollars that are going to be transferring into the general fund so that we don't have to borrow that funky million-dollar money?
Well, we're going to borrow the money, in effect, in order to make the general fund whole on those things that are owed to it.
So that help redo?
That's... So if we had that sheet up there again, right? The initial proposal that we're starting from is that we would ask voters for permission to borrow money in order for the sewer fund to pay the million dollars that in the due to others column to the general fund. And the same thing, the $1.8 million would be in order for the general fund to make itself whole, having made a series of decisions over a significant period of time that dug that hole.
So I guess my question is, on your cash flow chart that we looked at, the 12-month cash flow, does that multi-million dollar money show up as receivables in there to change that bottom line on the general fund? And we're still 4 million behind come next July?
I know what he's saying. I think I know what he's saying.
Go ahead.
I think that what it does is it becomes revenue back into, and yes, we won't be at 4 million a year from now. Negative 4 million a year from now. But we will owe, over a period of time, that money back so that...
We'll have to make payments in order to go along. In truth, right?
Yes, that's correct. Water and sewer, that's right.
Water and sewer rates are going to go up for the $2 million that water and sewer owes the city. So I guess my question is, when I look at that chart and it says we're negative 4 million in a year from now, is that including the $2 million that we're going to get from water and sewer?
No, no.
That's a cumulative deficit.
The numbers in the top chart, the top cash flow, do not include... I asked you this question the other day.
That's right.
The numbers in the top do not include the numbers under the nuts line.
Right, because we haven't, voters haven't approved $2.8...
But will it?
Yes, if you, sure, hold on, hold on. If you take the $4,302,000 that this currently says we will be in deficit in June of 2026, and we borrow $2.8 million for the, to, on the strength of the city's vote this, sometime this summer, right? And we borrow, we arrange for the $3 million loan that's already been approved for the water tower, right? If we add those things all in and we put in the fire truck, if we, all things being equal, those loans that are not currently figured above will show up in that bottom line. It will be, will reduce the cumulative deficit so that effectively we'll finish the year at zero. Now, what it doesn't do, and this goes to Lori's question really, is it doesn't put us in a better position next year for managing our own cash flow variance. We're still going to have to have a new line of credit next year in anticipation of taxes.
Oh, absolutely. That I understand.
So, but yes, what that line doesn't show in column E under June 2026 is the potential for any of that income to come back in through the loans. Okay. Hearing the conversation tonight, I'll tell you where it leaves me. It leaves me thinking, council members, that we would be wise to hold both those nights next week, at least for the moment. And by the end of the week, we may know more about whether or not we need them both or just one of them. For sure, we're going to need one. And I think it's easily possible that between water and sewer and finance task force work this week and some of the questions that have been raised around looking at our expense side, we would be wise to have two meetings next week to focus entirely on budget questions. Okay? All right, y'all. There you go. Two hours of scintillating fun with the Newport City Council. Chip, if you're still with us, and yes, you are, I just want to say thank you because it was unimaginable to me two and a half months ago that I would have, or any of us would have, as much a picture as we do now of where we stand. So thank you for all your work on our behalf. And I'll see you tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock.
It's you.
All right. Okay, council, so we're going to move on. John, would you like to make a report on where the Water and Sewer Task Force stands at the moment?
Well, we're still pursuing information in terms of costs and approaches to financing metering. Research is being done in that regard. And we're also gearing up to start the process of trying to revise the water ordinance in particular with an eye toward making the metering provisions or bringing in some enforceability to get metering done. That's one issue. And another issue is reviewing and updating all of the provisions relating to delinquent accounts and how one goes about collecting delinquencies.
Which is to say, the plate is full.
So, yeah, so I think we're busy enough with that. And we've been aware from day one that depending on how the inter-fund transfer issue resolves itself, that we'd be looking at reviewing rates again at some point within the next few months.
Okay. If y'all have questions or curiosities, the next meeting of the Water and Sewer Task Force is Wednesday night this week, right?
Wednesday, 6:30.
Wednesday at 6:30, right here?
Unless it gets preempted for a council meeting.
No, that would be next week. So this, are we meeting this week?
Water and Sewer is next week, Wednesday.
Sorry, we're not meeting this week.
Correct.
Yes, okay. I misspoke. Water and Sewer is not meeting this week. They will be next Wednesday night, barring preemption. Okay. Since Kevin isn't here, I'll just give a quick report on the Housing and Security Public and Cameras and Community Safety Task Force. That group has had its first meeting. It was well-attended. There were more than a dozen people around the table. And Travis and Kevin will be meeting with that group again on Wednesday afternoon at 3:30. And that's when their work will really begin. And the first meeting will be focused largely on getting kind of a statistical bearing on where things are. So some of the social service representatives in the community will be bringing some numbers to the table so we have a sense of what we're really dealing with.
Meeting here?
Yep, meeting here, 3:30 Wednesday. Anybody's welcome to come. Travis, you have anything you want to add to that?
No, that's perfect.
Okay. All right. And then, Mr. Touche, do you want to lead us through with the Fire Department Task Force?
So we've reached out and we have 10 members that are going to be involved with the task force as of now. I really want to encourage more city residents or business owners to join because it's all informational, right? We have a lot of, we have a lot of fire department members. We have several business owners that currently are on there with some retired chiefs as well. So anyone that is looking to join, just send me an email, call me, let me know. We're looking to start a meeting on Monday, July 14th, at 6:00 PM here. And we're looking to meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays in the month, with the first one just being an introduction and an overview of what tasks are going to be assigned to whom and how we're going to do that. Because we have a lot, a lot to dig into, so. If anybody is interested, please, again, reach out. We would love to have your input and information.
I think, Andrew, in the past, with these other three task forces, we've actually reviewed the names. So I wonder if you might just read the names of those who you're recommending? And then we'll ask somebody, maybe you, Andrew, can bring a motion to officially have the council appoint those members to the task force.
Absolutely. So for the, it's Dylan Messier, who is a lieutenant on the Newport City Fire Department. Steve Ellis, who owns Raise Auto, Raise Towing and Recovery. Robert George, who is a retired chief. Roger Goslin, who is a lieutenant with the South Burlington Fire and a Newport City dispatcher. Michael Curtin, who was just appointed fire chief of Burlington Fire, Burlington City Fire Department. Andrew Carbine, who's an assistant chief here in the city. Kevin McCos, who is our chief, fire chief. Doug Spates, who's a business owner here. And David La Force, who is a business owner as well.
Do I hear that as a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint those people named to the Fire Department Task Force. Do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. I'll just ask if there's any comment, question, concern that the community would like to raise up? Hearing none, any further discussion from the council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Andrew, for that. And Jim and Travis, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have enough information to move ahead with an approval on a loan for a fire department vehicle, right?
Police department.
I'm sorry, police department.
Yeah.
You do have it.
I've got a letter from Cooney Bank. I've got an email from, for some sake, they haven't sent the official letter, but I did get the rate.
And are we going to need, we'll need an official action once we get the letter from them? How has this worked in the past?
I think the letter is going to say exactly what her email says.
And...
She said about three years of what the cost is and what the finance rate is.
Okay, so here's my recommendation, Travis. If it's okay with you, what I'd like to do is, we know we're going to meet either Monday or Wednesday night or both next week. I'd like that in the form of something written for the council to digest. And we'll put it in the packet and warn it along with the rest of that meeting, okay? So we should have an answer for you by next week, Travis, to be able to go get that car.
Perfect, thanks.
I thought that letter was coming today, but I'm still ahead by then.
Fair enough. So we're going to put that one off, council, okay? And Jim, please help me remember when we're working on warning that meeting this week.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Mike Brown, are you still with us?
Nope.
Wake up, Mike.
Hello, hello.
So Mike, you want to speak to the request to add John Aldridge to the REC Committee, please?
Sure. So the REC Committee interviewed him. They followed the procedure. So John is the executive director of MenSec down at the Gateway. He's worked for several other nonprofits. I think he's a fantastic asset to the Recreation Committee. And they highly recommend him to join the committee.
Okay, any questions from council? Any questions from the community? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve John Aldridge as a member of the REC Committee.
So moved.
Okay, John, I've got a motion. Curtin, have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike, for hanging in there for two hours.
Yay! Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. And the next item is, we had a, what do they, what do you call it when somebody shows you something? Anyway, Jacques came last time and gave us a presentation. That's the P-word I was looking for. Gave us a presentation on the proposed vision in dental insurance rates. Those rates were included in your packet for a second time this time. I do not feel a need to try and go through and rehearse them again. We've reviewed them carefully. So I'll just ask, is there someone who would like to make a motion to approve the proposed vision in dental insurance rates as presented by Jacques Robertch the last meeting?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
One second.
I have a motion and a second from John. Is there anyone in the community who has any questions or concerns about those rates? Okay, any further questions from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right. And I'm going to give you all some great news for you tonight. Well, I'll give an update in a moment, but item nine will not be requiring an executive session. So we have one executive session this evening. And I'm going to, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss with Travis Bingham, our police chief, approval to offer a job to a part-time dispatcher as executive session as per one VSA Section 31383. Do I have a motion? I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are in, oh, I'm sorry, I need to rush her.
Just with respect to this, sometimes when you come out, you've all decided based on something that you've discussed what you're going to do. And I just want to make sure that with respect to this and anything like it, that we, you look at whether or not it was ever budgeted and consider that as well. And consider whether or not you could, if it's needed more, it could be postponed a bit for the next budget.
Fair enough. Okay, we are in executive session. Yosa? Jim, Yosa?
No.
Okay, we are out of executive session. No action was taken. Somebody wants to make a motion from the council?
My move that we approve the offer to hire a part-time dispatcher is presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation by the chief for a part-time dispatch hire. Any comments or questions? Let's just do it from the council at this point.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that we did ask the specific question relating to budgeting and priorities. And there is a significant possibility that this action will actually reduce the overtime budget and take some pressure off the other dispatchers. So that will help offset, in addition to what was budgeted for this specific purpose.
Okay. Any other comment, question? Any other comments from the council? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Moving on to item nine. So here's the news, y'all. Andrew and I, with significant input from the department heads and then from council, created a new job description that we called Financial and Office Administrator. We advertised that position for as little as a week in one instance and as long as, I think, 10 days in another. We did it on the Dispatch, the electronic newspaper. We did it on Express for a full week. We did it with seven days. And we did it from the Chronicle for a week. And so far, we've had very few serious and qualified applicants. One that we had that I expected we might interview tonight in executive session has withdrawn that person's name because of other life situations, life circumstance. So I don't have anybody to put before the council tonight, which concerns me because I was really hoping we'd come in tonight with a strong, what I thought on paper was a very strong candidate for that position. So I just wanted to kind of get your all's judgment. I can think of a number of ways we could move forward. We could re-advertise and cross our fingers and try and activate a network to see if we can get more applicants in the door. Every time we advertise, we're spending, I don't know, cost probably runs somewhere around $800 or $1,000 to do those four things that I just talked about. Maybe a little less, it's somewhere in that. It's not insubstantial. We could rethink the job description. And one way that I've thought about that would be to divide it into two parts and hire two part-time positions, which, like, you know, where we would hire some, one person part-time for basically the office administrative work, backing up the council and the department heads on office administration, helping to respond to questions and concerns raised by the public, et cetera. And that would include, you know, someone who can help with the onboarding the paperwork for someone we hire or let someone go or there's a workers' comp claim. You could put all of that into a part-time position. And then you could have a separate part-time position with some flexibility in it, I would think. That would be the person who would inherit whatever it is we end up creating with all this finance work. Someone who would learn NEMRIC or know NEMRIC when they come in the door. There are a few of those folks out there who might be interested in that if it was a part-time position. And they would, you know, obviously, they would be trained. And they would, you know, obviously, they would be trained by Chip and the folks at Nemrick on whatever we end up with for a final general ledger of accounts, and how to generate the reports that the group is looking for. So that's another way we could do it. Theoretically, in my mind, that could mean less money, less impact on the budget, because we'd be hiring two part-time positions, and the likelihood is that we would not offer benefits with either of them, and the reason they'd be attractive is because somebody's doing them on top of parenting, or another job, or whatever. So that's another way. A third possibility that I don't relish, but is on the table, is we could just say, really, we're trying to do this in the wrong order, and that we should wait, hire a city manager first, and then let that person sort it out. I will just say that my experience of meeting weekly with the staff, and pretty closely with the staff, Jim knows I'm here pretty much every day, almost every day, one for one reason or another for some amount of time, and my judgment is that the staff is worn down by the work of trying to pick up the administrative pieces that used to be covered by Becky, theory, and this job was not exactly the same job that Becky had, but it certainly covers a lot of the work that, the description covers a lot of the work that Becky did. And there may be other options out there that I haven't thought of, that you all could think of, but I'd love to hear them if you have them, and I'd love to hear your guidance and wisdom about what the next moves ought to be, 'cause honestly, I was, I really wanted to have a different conversation tonight. Andrew, you've been inside that a little bit, too.
My, my biggest fear with hiring a city manager first is they will be taking on the role of what we have designed for the admin position, and they will not be able to focus on their tasks fully.
The big picture.
The big picture, because they're trying to do both tasks, or both job descriptions, essentially.
I think there is some strength in dividing the two, because an administrative assistant could have a different background, or maybe less schooling, versus, you know, a financial person might have more direct and actually wanna, don't wanna answer phones, or and do that kinda end work. So I think there could be a strength, we could get more applicants, but then that does, when I hear they don't get benefits, I just go, because that doesn't necessarily attract like a dedicated person who really sees and wants to move the city forward. But I think, as of right now, I really would want that person invested, because it is such a significant position. But I suppose if we divided them, it could be like, well, I really care, but I just, you know, I have something else. So I think I just have to contemplate with that a little bit more. And also re-advertising in other places, like different job boards that are more in tune for people that work in public offices, or in local governments, there's a couple other places. I mean, not that I don't wanna skip out on any of our local papers, or like the normal common readers, but maybe like a statewide website, too.
Was it posted on VLCT?
It wasn't this time. It was in January when we did it. And in January, when I did it on VLCT, we didn't get any applicants from outside of the Newport area. We had, I think it was three, might have been two applicants who had decent resumes. And by the way, I reached out, I think maybe it was three, anyway, I reached out to them and invited them to consider applying, and all three said that either life situation had changed, or as they looked at the job description, they didn't feel as if they were fully qualified for it, the way it's written.
Can I?
Please.
You and I know that staff really needs somebody to go to upstairs, to get some authority. So, in my mind, maybe better off hiring a city manager, a good city manager and a part-time administrative assistant. Wouldn't be nice to have a budgeted city manager already. Basically, going back to what we had before, before we would have been done.
Go ahead, Andrew.
One of the things that was spoken about, I think Quine raised it originally, was the salary, and whether or not the salary was, that you were offering was commensurate with who would be willing to come here, move here, work here, for that salary. And it's not as if, if you offered it in a higher range, that you wouldn't say that you would, they would get an offer that would be commensurate with what you thought their experience was, which could be lower than the obvious higher range. So it's not like you're committing yourself if you went up from, I think it was sixty thousand as your top, to eighty thousand as your top. You're not committing yourself to eighty thousand, but you might get more qualified people who are more willing, and I'm not saying I'm...
For the administrative position you're talking about, not for the city manager, the financial and office administrator.
For what you have, financial and office administrator, with whatever qualifications they needed to have, and whatever they were supposed to do. It's just, if you, if you opt it, maybe you would get some really qualified people. I don't know. You might know that, or it...
It's, you know, it's anybody's guess, in my judgment. We advertised this with a range of fifty-five to seven...
Sixty-five?
No, fifty to sixty-five. Fifty to sixty-five is the range that we advertised. And, you know, one of the, one of the issues we have as we hire for a position like this is, in my head, I call it grade inflation, right? If you, if you bring somebody in considerably higher compared to the rest of the department heads, into a position where they do not have supervisory responsibility, right, that department's heads are expected to have, it can, it can really, very quickly get your entire salary scale out of whack. And I think we have a problem on the top end of our salary scale that's gonna have to be addressed in the long term, anyway, honestly. I mean, you know, we haven't had this conversation yet, but when we get around to looking at the city manager position, which I think at the moment was slated at ninety-five plus benefits, you know, there's some question about whether or not you can attract the person you're looking for, for that, that salary, too. So I guess what I'm saying is, we're in a, it's, we're, this is not an unusual buy. In fact, I've experienced it in pretty much every supervisory or management job I've had. You know, how do you bring someone in? And if you bring someone in a little bit higher, then you have to figure out how to adjust everybody else over, over a relatively short time as well. Laurie?
I like the idea of splitting it, because I, I took a look at that job description, and I thought, holy cow, that is a big job description. And I think you would be wise if you split it. Number one, you would to have the office, you know, administrative assistant, as it might be called, someone who is in the office, you know, five days a week, whatever part-time we look at.
Four hours a day.
Calls a day, answer the phones, shuffle the papers around, you know, whatever they need to do to assist, learning, learning the job. And then offering a financial person who, now that Nemrick is on the cloud, has possible opportunity to work remotely, possibly coming into the office one day a week for context, I mean, really there, that person's job is to manage this whole big financial situation. And, and in all honesty, you might find someone who doesn't need benefits. Maybe you find, honestly, you find a state employee who's retired after twenty-five or thirty years, they're getting state retirement, they don't need benefits, they wanna help, they wanna do this, and they've got the experience to be able to do this. Or you find, this is a, this is a suggestion, find a retired accountant who wants to step in and do something like that. But you, you might actually split it along those work lines and be able to fill it.
Yeah, Jim, I'll just go back to what you were saying from a moment ago. One of my concerns, I mean, I've made no secret of the fact that my personal preference is to get some of these major financial questions sorted before we start looking for a city manager. And the reason for that is that I think we'll attract a, a really high-quality candidate, a number, I, I think we have the potential to attract a number of high-quality candidates if, if we clearly have our act together, and we're, we've got a mayor and council who are taking responsibility, we've done the hard work of figuring out how we're gonna dig ourselves out of this. And I don't really wanna see us go out and hire a turnaround specialist, I wanna see us go out and hire somebody who knows how to lead us into the future for the next decade. So for me, that's why I've been pretty vocal in ways that have been well-received, I've appreciated how well-received it's been by folks on council, that, you know, I'd like, I'd rather have that conversation about what that job description for the city manager looks like, and then beginning to advertise for that position sometime in the fall, than I would now. But even if we started looking, you know, let's say we started a process now by which we try and define the job description, and then we start looking in, you know, mid to late July, the truth is, I can't imagine a situation in which we're gonna hire a qualified candidate in less than six months. I think that would be miraculous to do it that quickly. I think the likelihood is that it's a, it's a longer process. And I just think people, people in this building, including in your office, need relief faster than that.
Absolutely.
So that's why I'm not, I'm not inclined toward the third option, I'm inclined toward either rerunning it again, although I don't know why, we would keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results, right? We didn't, we haven't gotten phenomenal job, phenomenal response any of the three times that some variation of this job has been offered.
It's a catchy job, though, isn't it?
It is, I understand, it's big. That's right.
And it's, it's a division of skills. I mean, it's not rocket science to be able to answer a phone appropriately and dug out material, but if you're then expected to be doing all the heavy-duty fiscal stuff, really am I gonna waste my time dealing with a phone when somebody else could be doing that?
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you. I mean, go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry.
The only reason I mention that, because I know you've been up here every day of the week making a decision, a city manager could be in there doing that. The only reason I mention that, if you hire a financial office administrator for, let's say eighty thousand dollars a year, then in the end, you're gonna have to hire a city manager for a hundred, a hundred and ten. To me, that's a hundred and eighty thousand, to me, if you hire a city manager for a hundred and ten, or so, a hundred and ten, and hire just an office administrative assistant for fifty, something like that.
I hear you. I do, I hear that.
That's the only reason I mention that. And somebody can make a decision without, Rick, can you come up here and announce?
Yeah, it's not sustainable for mayor and council either, over time, we clearly need to resolve this, there's no doubt.
I also might recommend, especially for, well, either one of them, but you might consider, if you make the decision to split, to split it, to look into a company like, I think it's a DECO, I don't know the exact name, they hire for state positions, it's, it's more of a temporary into permanent kind of thing, they might be able to assist us in getting a pool instead of us going on on our own. I don't know, I don't know anything about them, other, you know, other than I know they, they hire with the state here. So it's just an option.
Thank you, Laurie.
One problem, I think, in hiring two part-timers is that, in the end, when you think out into the future as to what you want, what do you do with these part-timers who wanted a part-time job, but now you're thinking, oh, well, we need a full-time financial person, or we need a full-time administrative assistant? It's problematic.
Yep.
Unless you want another, you wanna hire a full-time one of them, and a full-time one of the financial, and a full-time city manager.
I don't have any imagination that that's where we're headed.
Yeah, yeah, but then you have some problems with getting rid of a part-timer if you find the ideal full-timer.
I mean, that, that issue would present itself, too, if we hired a combined person, and then we're like, seven, like, we're needing you to fill in a lot more on the financial front, and, oh, the phones and emails are backlogging, and we've got all of these public requests, and so it would be kinda awkward either way. But yeah, definitely, as far as like long-term planning, 'cause that's what I'm like, I would love to get somebody who's invested and cares about this community, and wants to see the longevity succeed, and so, yeah, the pros and cons of having somebody who is part-time, because maybe they're experienced and they're semi-retired, or have those things on lock, does that person necessarily then wanna be here for seven, eight years? Probably not, you know? But I think for now, like, decoupling could be a big benefit, and at least getting more applicants in the door, we can grow it, once we see it and we like the person and what they're doing, too. I think that would be good.
I'm asking this because I have no idea what the answer is. Did, historically, did the person in Becky's position, I'm asking Jim to, because of institution of knowledge, did the person in Becky's position provide any kind of administrative support for other department heads, or was it exclusively for the city manager?
Yeah. No, she did, she did it at other departments and the city manager.
So it wasn't specifically a city manager, then?
No, not at all. I think that's what's really wearing down the staff, 'cause they're, they're ending up trying to cover, and they have been now for a year, trying to cover things that really are challenging and a distraction.
I think a big part of hers was staff support.
We have one other piece that I'll just put on the table, not because I think it has an immediate impact, but in the long term, one thing that came up again this week when I met with Stephanie Clark from Whiten Burke, who's the company that's doing the work on, on our TIF feasibility, and then, hopefully, in my judgment, a TIF application, one of the things she said was, you all should begin thinking about who the finance person is, who's smart enough to manage this, because it's not, it's not just simple stuff. And there are ways that you can actually use TIF to help finance the cost of that work, but bigger cities than ours have gotten themselves into some significant trouble that shall remain nameless but begin with a B. Actually, a lot of them do, don't they, in this state? That's pretty funny. That doesn't define it at all. Anyway, so, you know, honestly, Burlington's example, you know, where they really got themselves crosswise with the state because they didn't answer these questions appropriately is instructive, and so we're talking about the fact that, I mean, we brought it up this week and talked about the fact that whoever we're hiring in this position, we really have no expectation, the way the job description is currently written, that that's the person who's gonna actually manage the TIF financing questions, right, all the bookkeeping and accounting related to TIF. So that's another piece that could grow this thing. And having said all of that, here are two hopeful things. I was on council for a year, and I came in at least a full year, maybe a year and a half, to the search for a, a way to resolve the challenges for the fire department in terms of leadership. And when people were feeling kind of most gloomy about that prospect, we came up with an answer that I think is actually quite elegant, and I think it's working really well for the city of Newport with Jeff Young as the administrative firefighter, the position that we hired him for. So it's not that things don't resolve themselves if we just keep kind of puzzling over it together and trying to sort it out. And I would say similar, I feel a similar way about Chip. You know, we didn't even know three months ago that you could hire Nemrick as kind of interim consulting to get you through a financial rough spot. And honest to God, I don't know what we'd do right now if we didn't have Chip pushing us and encouraging us. So, you know, the answer's out there, I'm confident of it. It was a blow this afternoon, because I really had my heart set on a different kind of outcome tonight, but I'm, I'm not, in the long run, worried. I think if we just kind of buckle down and think through it again, we'll come up with an answer. So with your permission, maybe Andrew and I and the department heads go back to the drawing board and think a little bit about what two part-time positions might look like, and how there's job, how the job descriptions would be written, and we bring those back for further conversation. Does that sound all right? Any other comments from folks in the community? I don't think we need a vote on that, it just is what it is, Andrew and I'll go back to work on it. Okay, that's it for number nine, we're coming down the home stretch, y'all. Number ten, any public comment? Anybody got any energy left?
Pam, Ann, and Chris Roy.
Okay, Chris. This is your big moment.
Oh, big one.
Come on, Ann, step up. Come on, Pam, step up.
Yeah, hi, guys. I'm just a member of Northeast Community Amateur Radio Club. Not this weekend, the next weekend, the last weekend in June, 28th and 29th. The club and other amateurs across the country are going to be participating in emergency exercise. And the public is invited. You guys are invited. And the address is 3892 Downhill Road. They have it at Newport, but I think it's Derby. I'm told it's right around the Kingdom Trails.
Oh, you mean the Meagot Trails?
Meagot Trails, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And it's in emergency communications. And you can see a demonstration and chat. It's a great bunch of guys. So anybody who wants to come, like I said, it's open to the public.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thanks, Chris. Pam?
Mine, I think, got resolved.
Okay.
At vendor applicant.
Yes, thank you. Pam?
I've said enough.
For the moment.
Tomorrow's a new day.
I'll never speak again.
I'm not buying that. You heard it here first. It wasn't on camera, was it? All right. New business. Jim, you got anything you want to add today?
Thank you.
Okay, Jim?
No.
Andy?
No.
Kurt? All right. Old business. Anybody got any old business?
No.
All right. So the next regular meeting of the council, knowing that we may call a special meeting by the end of this week, but let's go ahead and set the next regular meeting for July 7th at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to that?
So moved.
I have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And finally, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion? A second?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you very much.